King William. Budget work session meeting to order. Chris, would you call it? Well, oh, do we have, oh, we have one, don't we? Oh, we don't.
No. Mr. Miskowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Garber?
Yeah.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Chairman Hodges?
Here. Is everyone reviewed? And if so, uh, do we have a, a motion for the meeting agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Any further discussion? Chris?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Morin?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi. Budget work session matters. Outside agency budget request, are you going to start?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All outside agency requests have been provided to the Board of Supervisors. Tonight, several outside agencies have requested to be present to answer any questions from the Board regarding their request for funding. First up tonight is Waukerton Volunteer Fire Department. Waukerton Volunteer Fire Department provides volunteer emergency services to King William and to King Queen County. The request for funding for FY twenty four is forty five thousand, which is an increase of five thousand six hundred and eighty from FY twenty three. The organization has not requested an increase since FY twenty seventeen. They have been level funded for thirty nine thousand three twenty since FY twenty seventeen. At this time, I will invite Chief Coleman to the podium for any questions from the Board.
Thank you. I have with me tonight Ashley Gladn, who is our Treasurer, and Othel Hall as Assistant Chief. Uh, I'm Robbie Coleman, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My son Jason Coleman is actually the chief now. I was chief for about twenty-five years, and I've enjoyed being in a volunteer for over fifty years in Waukerton. So it's kind of in my blood, and my son Jason has taken over, and he's working tonight in Chesapeake. But, um, we're proud to continue the, to provide emergency response to, uh, the central section of both King Queen and King William Counties. And we run fifty, fifty-eight percent of our calls in King William. And our call volume has increased twenty-two percent over the year twenty twenty. So just as, uh, emergency calls increase, so have the cost of, uh, equipment and, uh, fuel and electricity and heating oil. In two thousand and nineteen, we purchased a new engine at the cost of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, we purchased a new tanker at the cost of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And that over a million dollars worth of equipment that we purchased was paid for with donations and grants that we, uh, that we achieved through fundraising and, and grant writing. So as, as she mentioned, we had not asked for any increase since FY twenty seventeen. And, uh, we're very frugal with our, with our expenses. And we, uh, we check every dollar to make sure that we are getting the most that we can out of it. Um, we continue to, to save our money in preparation for making a capital expenditure. And therefore, we don't have to go to the bank to borrow that money. We save that money until the time we make, are ready to make a purchase, and then we'll pay cash for it if at all possible. So this year, our, our capital plan is to purchase a, uh, a boat that will allow us to go out into the river. Uh, we, being located in Waukerton on the Madepenai River, we've had several cases where people are either stranded, broke down, fire on a boat, or personnel aboard. And we, at the present time, we are relying on West Point and King William to assist us with those in the game warding, game warden and, uh, in, in that area. But our plan is to be able to go out and help boaters on the river, both, uh, Madepenai and Pomocki. And in addition to that, we are planning to replace our, uh, first response truck. That is a two thousand and four model. We're going to replace that with a, a pickup truck that will be able to also tow the boat. All of that expense will be handled through, uh, fundraising and grant writing. So we're here tonight not to ask for any capital expenditure, but only to ask for a small increase to help cover our cost of, uh, our normal operating expenses. And we greatly appreciate all your support that you've offered in the past. And, uh, we continue to have a, an excellent relationship with the King William Emergency Services Crew, working hand in hand with them on a daily basis. Thank you for all your support for many, many years. Is there any questions that we can answer for you?
I think we need to thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Well, you know, as I said, I've been doing it for so many years that I, I thoroughly enjoy helping people. And that's why I continue for a long time.
Yeah, over the years, I've heard nothing but good things about y'all. And, uh, I, I certainly appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Chief, the, the numbers here is King William responses totals fifty-eight percent of your calls?
Of the total call body.
There's a, there's a, um, paragraph here that indicated there's been more this past year.
We did, we did, did have additional calls. Um, I think when I sent in the budget request, it was prior to the end of the year.
Yes, December twelfth.
That may be, that may be the difference, I'm not sure. But we had a, we had a total of a hundred and ninety-five calls for our emergency response. And a hundred and thirteen of those were in King William. So which is, uh, fifty-eight percent of our call body. And it continues to increase, um, every year, uh, which is typical for the business, I think. I think you'll probably see that across the board.
I'm in no way trying to tell you how to operate, but do you think you're going to be able to go out and help all those stranded most? Get out there in boats in, in spring when they haven't worked on them?
Well, our plan is to go get the people and bring them to shore. And they may have kids on board. Sometimes they, it occurs at the edge of dark when, uh, they can't see where they're going. And we've had several cases where people in our area, friends of ours, and also people that have come here from another area that don't know the river, uh, they'll run their boat up on the mud flat. Our plan is to go get them, not tow their boat and not do water rescue. We're not planning to look for, for grounded persons or those, those kinds of things. We only plan to go pick up the person and bring them back to their truck. And then it'll be up to them to figure out how to get their boat a later time.
Did most of the squads not respond to strange, that one, right?
Sir?
The last time you, most of the squads do not respond to strange.
Well, we used to have a boat-
Be injured or something to that effect or in the water or?
I have to defer to Spencer, to Chief, uh, Spencer, as to what his protocol is in West Point. But, um, in, in a lot of cases, it's mainly just to try to get the people back to safety. And, uh, we also had a case where people were in a duck blind and their boat blew away. And they had to wait two hours for the game warden to come from Gloucester to get them out of the duck blind because their boat was gone down the river. So we see a need, and it, it feels bad when there are people put their boat in at Waukerton and they can't get back to their truck. Because their boat is either broke down, stuck on the marsh, or caught on fire or whatever. So we just feel like that we're letting them down if we don't help them, because that's what we're here for.
Well, I'm not telling you not to do it. I'm just saying, I, I got a feeling that at the beginning of the season, it might be a lot.
You might be right. We might have, might have asked for more than we can achieve.
I've seen a ton of them out there that are just-
Yeah.
They shouldn't have been out there in that boat.
You're right. Especially with ethanol, the ethanol, um, causes lots of issues that people don't recognize.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's apparently justified request, so, um, you know, we've been level funding you guys for a long time, so, um, just like when everybody else, I, I've always appreciated the effort that you guys brought to the county. And, um, like having you guys here, look forward to having you guys around for a while.
Thank you, thank you. We, we want to continue to, to serve both counties and, uh, provide a service that we think is needed. And we picked up three volunteers this year. That's been a challenge for us, is finding people that are willing to donate their time. But we did pick up three volunteers, so the process continues to, to work. Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Take that message back to the entire state.
Uh, we will. Thank you.
Next is Mango Hick Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Mango Hick provides fire protection and emergency medical services coverage for the northwestern part of King William County. Mango Hick is requesting a ten percent funding increase from ninety-four thousand nine seventy-seven to one oh four four seventy-five. Funding from King William County supports sixty-eight percent of the day-to-day operation expenses of the organization. Community fundraisers and EMS recovery fees assist with their ability to operate and fund provided, and funding provided by the county. And if you'll notice, I had to update the little summary page. I did update that they, their, their request is a ten percent increase. And I will now welcome Mr. Will Reed to the podium for any additional information from the Board.
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Chairman. Um, and thank you for having me here today. I'm, uh, Will Reed, I've been volunteering in Mango Hick for seven years now. I'm the president up there now. And, um, I just wrote a, a type of little thing to read to y'all. Um, I'm here to represent Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department to discuss the two thousand and twenty-four, um, for some, yeah, financial year. Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department serves and protects over thirty-eight hundred residents twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. When someone calls nine one one, they expect the best response from our firefighters. And, and in order to provide that response, we're requesting a ten percent increase across the board to our budget. The methodology used to develop the budget included the annualized forecast of current expeditions compared to historical expenses, accounting for inflation, which, um, we all have experienced. And the market increases on commodities such as fuel. Today, I have brought with me the EMS and fire, uh, call logs for you to review. As shown, um, from the EMS call logs, we have doubled the amount of EMS calls we've responded to compared to last year. Last year, we responded to seventy-five EMS-related calls. This year, uh, we've responded to a hundred and sixty-one related EMS calls. Last year, Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department ran seventy-three fire-related calls. During the two thousand and twenty-two year, Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department responded to a hundred and seven fire-related calls. That's a thirty-five percent jump from last year. The funds provided by the county support sixty-eight percent of the day-to-day operational expenses, including, but not limited to insurance, fuel, heating, utilities, and the department required maintenance. Provided to you as, um, is Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department's two thousand and twenty-four model of our operating budget. This includes, uh, building and lawn maintenance, apparatus maintenance, and required supplies. Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department provides fire protection and emergency medical services coverage for the northwestern part of King William County referred to the Mango Hick District. We are also provide services across the county and assist with mutual aid services. Mango Hick Volunteer Fire Department is entirely volunteer-based, consisting of over fifty members who without hesitation risk their lives for King William public. Our membership consists of fire prevention personnel, emergency medical technicians and paramedics, cadets and juniors, auxiliary and administrative personnel. Our members have documented over seventy-five hundred volunteer hours from January first, two thousand and twenty-two to present date. A reduction in funding for our department would adversely affect our ability to serve our community and meet the increasing, um, call demands. Our station would be unable to support the growth of and provide for the rapid, uh, growing county population. In turn, the community's safety would be jeopardized and with a decrease of our skilled services. Our recruitment efforts would be terminated, and the county would see an increase in missed calls. We don't want to see that. Thank you for your time. Y'all have any questions?
It looks like at ten percent, we just break y'all even, counting your other revenues.
Yes.
That's the way it looks to me.
Yeah, that's what-
It's not unreasonable.
Fuel costs and inflation.
Ninety-nine hundred, actually, it seemed a little light for fuel, but for the equipment you run, but anyway.
Uh, anything else, y'all?
You, you show, um, just, just for curiosity's sake, you show FY twenty twenty-two revenue of almost twenty-nine thousand five hundred in fundraising. Is that projected, or was that what you actually realized in, in that year?
That's what we realized in-
Alright, that's-
You do a lot of fundraising.
Yeah, I know, I was, it was always one of those kind of nebulous numbers that we weren't sure what, what they were talking about. So that's, that's good to know, thank you.
Well, do y'all struggle at all with volunteers? Do you have everything you need, or?
We pretty much, um, we may do what we got. We, um, call goes out, we answer it. We, um, like, uh, Waukerton, uh, said, it's hard to find volunteers nowadays, but we're starting to get them in. Um, we're hosting an EMT class at Mango Hick, uh, starting in March. So we're finally getting some more EMTs and stuff like that.
The only reason I ask that is, I noticed when I was going over, uh, West Point's, they have been, they were awarded a grant, I think, in twenty nineteen for recruitment and retention of volunteers. Have y'all ever pursued that specific grant? I don't know what it entitles, you know?
I'm not sure. I'll have to talk with, um-
You know, that, that could maybe help. And I, I meant to mention that too, to, uh, to Mr. Sparks also. Or maybe y'all, y'all could get together and see, you know, maybe that could help y'all out some with the recruiting.
Alright.
You just went in in January, Chris.
Yeah, I was vice president for two years, and then I went in for president this year.
Well, I'm very proud of you. I've known this, this guy since he was about that tall. And he's grown up real good.
Thank you.
And again, with Mango Hick, we'd like to appreciate everything that y'all do for the entire county.
And we can't do it without y'all's support.
And, and we're going to do the best we can. Uh, it, it's not unreasonable what you're asking. We'll have to get your man with the calculator over there.
The, uh, which, I know that you guys are working hard to get more people certified.
Yes.
Do you have a, just a brief description of what you're doing outside of the EMS class? Those that are firefighters, for example?
We are, um, just a couple of members are taking different fire classes around. Our training officer, he wants to host a fire class at the end of the year. That way, we do EMS at the beginning and then a fire class at the, early in the, the year also. That way, people get trained, but- Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
West Point Volunteer Fire and Rescue provides fire, rescue, and emergency medical services to the lower third of King William County to include the town of West Point. Two firefighters, medics are on shift at all times, along with volunteers. Revenue recovery fees generate nearly a seventh of the department's annual budget and help defray the cost for part-time firefighter medic. The department is requesting level funding for FY twenty-four, and I will now invite Chief Chedam to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, thank y'all for having us tonight. With me tonight is our president and one of our key volunteers is Gina Wilson. Um, and so what does that mean? Gina actually pulls four twelve-hour shifts at the fire station. She's an EMT, and so she's, uh, she's there usually every Wednesday night to provide service overnight for the citizens of the county. So, um, and on top of all that, she's our president as well, which for us, we're a nonprofit organization. And, uh, and she provides a lot of the administrative work as well as head of our board. So, uh, I, I wanted to start tonight by telling you that we came to you last year and had a big ask. We asked you to increase our budget by a hundred and nine thousand dollars last year. And, uh, and y'all came through, and we appreciate it very much. And I wanted to tell you what that meant to the community. So we were able to effectively manage our, our call volume, which included a twenty percent increase from two thousand and twenty-one. And that meant that two highly-trained, experienced firefighters, at least one of which is an advanced life support certified, uh, uh, EMT or paramedic, uh, they were there twenty-four, seven. So we have two people, uh, at all times. We were also able to increase through what we call their professional volunteer program. Uh, we were able to increase, um, the ability to provide two crews. So last January in two thousand and twenty-two, we were able to provide two crews for eight hours in that month. This past January, we were able to provide two crews for a hundred and sixty-four hours. And, uh, we've been able to improve our volunteers in line with our part-time staff as well. And we really feel like, uh, we're growing a department that's bringing a lot of value to the community. We're asking for level funding this year and, um, and, but we don't want to sit on our haunches. So with that level funding, we, uh, we commit to staying where we are. We commit to continue to provide, uh, there's two personnel, uh, twenty-four, seven as well. But we want to improve that second crew. We want to increase that tremendously. And we believe that with our current system, that we can increase to over two hundred and fifty hours per month of having two crews at this level funding. So we come to you tonight to ask for, for your help again this year and, uh, and ask you to approve level funding, uh, as you see fit. And I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
We always like to hear level funding.
It's rare. I, I enjoyed the tour you gave me a couple of months ago, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Let's see things are going well.
We, we, we have challenges, but, but we're steadily working on them. And we would welcome anybody that wants to come and come, come down and visit us to do so, so.
That, that grant that I was speaking of earlier?
Absolutely.
I would appreciate it if you could maybe touch bases with them. I don't know whether it's something that they can use or can't.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Y'all meet anyway, correct? Don't y'all meet occasionally?
We do, we do, at, you know, more informally than anything, but we do stay in touch. Yes, sir.
And then you could really lay that on them to them at that point.
Absolutely, we'd be glad to help as well.
Is that a one-time grant?
No, sir, it's a, it's a federal grant, uh, and, uh, it's related to staffing, obviously. Uh, I'm not positive, I believe it's passed this year. It might still be in the works right now, but I'll really catch up with-
Is it a, is it a three-year grant or?
Uh, it's a four-year grant for volunteer recruitment and retention. And for us, it's paid for a recruiter work twenty hours a week.
Exactly, yeah.
Remember, we, we received one several years ago, didn't we? Two, two chiefs ago?
Andy, I think.
Oh, this is before, yeah, I was on the board, uh, so, uh, Andy was gone.
It has been productive. Uh, we've, we've increased our, we, we were in a bad shape with our volunteers last year, and we've been able to increase our volunteer participation. The two crews I'm talking about is not paid crews, it's volunteers. So when we went from eight hours last January to a hundred and sixty-four, that's our volunteers pulling those hours. And, uh, and we've got, we've got an EMT class going on right now with five new volunteers in there now. We've reached out and we've brought back some people who, uh, who had left their department. And, uh, we, you know, there's volunteer recruitment and retention is a roller coaster. We're on a, on an upswing right now, hopefully we can keep that going, but, uh, we're in a good spot right now.
And I remember back when I was waiting there.
There was. That's been a few years ago, too.
Problem, hey?
Yeah.
No, it sounds good, like, I like level funding, like, keep up the good work.
Well, we did have a big ask last year, we appreciate it.
Spencer knows I've been around long enough to remember when a fire truck and an ambulance used to pull it next to the mill and honk and horn, and that mill would empty out.
Good old days.
It wouldn't that long ago, really.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, no.
Now, I mean, West Point plays, and I've, I've said this for years, such a critical role in not, not just the town. It's important, a, a part that, of the county as the town is, but the coverage that they provide, the entire, you know, eastern part of the county, um, is, is invaluable and some of the, that, that we couldn't achieve without the efforts that they're, they're putting in.
And, and we want to be able to help the entire county. I believe it was, uh, sixty-nine calls last year outside of our first two to come help. Uh, we had five requests this weekend, and fortunately, a few of those were canceled, but we ended up coming, taking two calls this weekend. We want to be able to do that, and, uh, we want to be able to do it without leaving the southern portion, you know, unprotected. And with these multiple crews, we can do that as well. So we want to be able to help the other, the rest of the county as well, so.
Anybody? Chief, I'd like you to take it back, just like we gave with the other-
Sure.
-carbons and all public safety, uh, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
The Monkey Regional Library is the public library serving Goochlin, Hanover, King and Queen, and King William Counties. In King William, the library operates the Upper King William and West Point Branch Libraries. King William residents have full access to the other eight branches also. In addition to funding from the local governments, the organization also receives funding from the Commonwealth in the form of a grant for state aid to public libraries. The organization is requesting an increase of twenty-eight thousand four eighty-three for FY twenty-four. The increase is needed to, to provide merit increases to staff, anticipated health insurance increases, and to cover contractual cost increases while maintaining services like ours at the current level. I'll now welcome Mr. Shepley to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Tom Shepley with the library. Um, thank you again for taking time to listen to us, uh, with our requests. Uh, I would like to also thank you for your, uh, increase. We had a large increase last year that we asked for, and we had to work with all four of the counties to, uh, make that happen. Appreciate your time getting that over to the, uh, finish line. That was a, a big ask, and, uh, we're very thankful that we have it. That really helped to maintain the fifty-two hours a week that we have open in both of the branches, so. Um, I also would like to go ahead and thank you for, um, your assistance with the West Point building relocation. Um, I think that's going to be a really great program there, and it's nice to see that we're looking at, uh, building options, uh, at the King William end of the county, too. That's one of the, I know it sounds kind of silly, but that's one of the biggest things that helps public libraries continue to be a focal point. People start to look at them differently when they're in facilities that are, are outdated. So those would be really good things to, uh, to look forward to for the citizens. Um, as, uh, as it was described, uh, our request is basically for merit health insurance and about one percent. We have some contractual increases that will be happening, uh, due to, to, due to agreements that we have, like service agreements, so. But I welcome any questions.
What, what are you estimating your insurance increase to be?
Uh, give me a second. See, I think they were saying that was, I think it was eight percent.
Eight.
Mr. Ashcraft, we, our insurance is not going up, correct?
Zero.
Zero.
Yeah.
And is it possible it could, may not increase, or you're just presuming it will increase?
We're in the group with Hanover, Hanover government, Hanover schools, the jail. And, uh, this is the first year with a, a new company. Um, they give us a number that, that, that tells us that's what it's going to cost self-insurance.
Already got before.
Yeah, but, I mean, the county does.
Right.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Shepley, the forty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-three visitors, is that a King William number? Or is that a?
Uh, that's in the narrative, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, that's a King William number.
Okay, is that, that's not all physical visits? That, that's, that's everything? Or is that forty-five thousand?
People walking through the door.
Mm-hmm. That's a King William, then, okay.
Give, give me a second.
Both branch?
Yeah. It is for both branches. Yes, sir. And three hundred and forty-five thousand, system one.
Mr. She, I'm sorry, Mr. Shepley, you don't discriminate between folks walking in from King and Queen, and they're a visitor. You don't classify them as a King and Queen visitor to West Point?
We do not.
Probably be really difficult, but-
Probably impossible, yeah. It's, it is people walking through the door.
Yeah.
I mean, that, look, obviously, last year was, was a bit tough. It was a big ask, and I think it, it hit it, at a tough time, I think, for everybody. You know, uh, this is the five percent increase, which I think is, um, you know, it's in line with what we're seeing from, from just about everybody. Um, and it's, you know, it's a whole load of baseline inflation number that we're, that we've all been staring at all year. So, um, you know, I, I, I don't think unreasonable. I, I think it's, it's probably been long overdue that we, that we try to maintain some, some- um, you know, I I I don't think unreasonable. I I think it's it's probably been long overdue that we that we try to maintain some some level of understanding that the cost of services increases year over year, whether we want to believe it or not. You know, and so when we level fund something for five years, six years, ten years, however long it is, that eventually that's going to catch up with us. So. You know, I think the idea that especially in the environment that we're in, um you know, the 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 library costs are are going to need to see a five percent increase year over year is not not in any way unreasonable.
Ready?
I would like to ask. Have you ever considered, you know, I'm the air card guy, have you ever considered charging a modest fee for those? When people check them out, that you charge them a a modest fee, not a full hundred dollar a a a month, but couple bucks.
Um, we have a long history of offering the services at no cost.
This was even pre-COVID?
Um, we got the hotspots um like weeks before the pandemic. So. And it was uh wasn't really good planning. It was just luck because the immediately thereafter, schools across the Commonwealth scooped them up. So, no, we we haven't really considered that. Um I will say that um the federal funding has worked out. They haven't paid for it with like COVID, but uh funds. This year, what we were expecting to have happen, um I still don't have final information because the federal government is so slow. But I do believe that we have funding to cover this year's costs entirely. And what we will be doing is using the funding that we got from the localities, local funding this year to extend the service next year.
I was just wondering, so this is for merit increases and insurance, but none of that one hundred and fifty thousand last year went from merit increases at all?
No, it did include merit increase. It was about a hundred and twenty thousand at the end of the day, a hundred and twenty-five. Somewhere in there.
This is just new merit increases or additional merit increases or?
So so the way that being a staff person at the library works, you get evaluated every year. And we don't do cost of living raises, but if you're have a good evaluation, you would get a merit increase. If you had a great one, you might get more. We haven't done more for a couple of years.
So so what is the the range of your merit increase? Two percent, five percent?
Um, uh the budget is targeted at a five percent.
That's all.
When you do the merit increase, are they pretty much standard in handle King William, no matter where they're?
Um, so everyone who works in one of the ten branches is a library employee and they'll are treated the same way. And so so if we do five percent and you have a um a a good enough evaluation, you would get five percent.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Arts Alive provides onstage performances, summer camps, scholarships, art exhibits, and art workshops for residents of King William, New Kent, and King Way, King and Queen Counties. The Virginia Commission for the Art offers a creative communities partnership grant to encourage local governments to support the visual and performing arts. The commission matches up to forty-five hundred dollars, subject to funding of money given by county to local art organization. Arts Alive is requesting a seventy-five hundred dollar increase from King William County for FY, I'm sorry, is requesting seventy-five hundred dollars, not that much of an increase from King William County for FY twenty-four. This is a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for from FY twenty-three. The increase is due to the following factors. One, summer camp will be a full day this year. Two, there will be holiday performance in two thousand and twenty-three, and three, the cost of doing business. I'll now invite Mrs. Walton and Mr. Dice to the podium. Mister Chairman, members of the board, thank you for allowing us a few minutes of your time for this evening. Uh I'm Linda Walton. I'm here with Tim Dice. We are board members for Arts Lab. And tonight, we come before you to tell you a little bit the latest about Arts Lab and to request the funding so that we can continue to bring visual and performing arts to King William County. Um she's already mentioned the amount that we are asking tonight. And she's also mentioned some of the factors that we are considering, we're we're going to have been considering. As you're aware, as she mentioned, the commission will match up to forty-five hundred dollars. And as a nonprofit organization, local funds and grants are very impactful to our annual operation. Without these contributions, Arts Lab would have difficulty in meeting the funding needs. For nineteen years, Arts Alive has been dedicated to providing arts enrichment and cultivating personal growth through our performances, summer camps, scholarships, visual arts, workshops, and exhibits. Let me provide a few highlights in regards to King William County. Visual Arts Committee has been pleased to continue to offer adult workshops, and nine workshops were offered this past year, and there are plans to offer them again. We incorporate local talent by hiring teachers and artists for our programs. Uh many area artists participate in our exhibits displaying and selling their artwork. Summer Arts Camp was held in June of two thousand and twenty-two, and thirty-one percent of those campers were from our county. This program will continue in June as a full-day camp, which was the first time since two thousand and twenty. The camp provides arts, music, theater, and dance classes. Missoula Children's Theater Drama Camp was held in early August of two thousand and twenty-two, and sixty percent of those campers were from King William. Missoula will continue this upcoming year and includes with two onstage public performances. We award four scholarships each year, and one of the recipients last year was from King William. The funding will help provide affordable shows close to home. Arts Alive plans to use funds to represent five onstage season performances featuring national touring artists. Art exhibits are also provided for each performance. There are eight to ten visual art workshops taught by artists from Virginia Museum of Fine Arts, as well as local artists. Along with these summer camps mentioned earlier, we also partner with the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts to bring the VMFA Art Mobile to the community. Arts Alive continues to invest in our community and to provide quality opportunities at affordable pricing for all people of all backgrounds, ages, to explore their creative spirit. And we thank you for your consideration of our requests, and please feel free to visit our website, artsaliveincorporated.org or our Facebook page. And we look forward to our continued partnership and commitment to our citizens. And if you have any questions, Mister Dice is here to answer them.
All right.
First off, this looks different because we don't give you ninety-five hundred, we give you five thousand. So it's really seventy-five hundred that you're asking for from a county, correct?
Yes, because if you are able to give that to us and we get the matching grant from VMFA, that again provides the five percent of our production cost.
The way it's laid out, it almost looks like we're paying it all.
Sorry for the confusion there. We realized that as we were sitting in the back and I thought. We better clarify.
Any other question?
You bet.
Why is King and Queen's ask so low?
At one time, they were not participating at all, and they said, well, if we could participate, we'd have to do it at a lower rate. Um, we are asking that they increase if at all possible. I don't think they have been response to that uh in in recent years. We're glad they're back and participating, but um that's a good point. We haven't given up on that.
How many King and Queen residents, participants, I'm sorry, how many King and Queen citizens participate or come to Arts Alive activities? Do you have any idea?
Each year we reach out to them. I don't know if we have a new representative on the board yet, but um we do try and ask them to up the ante because it does obviously look.
I think he's talking about participants.
Yeah, how many, how many, what do you call them?
Oh, we don't have statistics from uh participants in King and Queen. It is much lower than King William, obviously. New Kent is our other uh area of contact, and they participate about as well as we do. It's probably in the thirties as well. It's not as high for Missoula Art Camp because they do their own Missoula program over there, and that pretty much takes their student population. Addresses that. So I do want to say one thing about cost of businesses, business operation. As chairman of the publicity committee, one of the things that we ran into very recently were the cost of signs. These corporate signs that are out here usually used for political purposes. We have some that are about five to six times size, so we can get the attention of people in the area. And we ask permission to place them in strategic areas. We could not believe the price quote that we got on replacing our signs, so we used the old ones that we had for one more year. We don't think they're suitable or would look good on the streets and roads of the county um beat up anymore. So uh when we've got the quote for those signs to replace them, it was unbelievable. We did put it in our budget this year, and that is one of the items that is a cost of business for us that has gone up significantly. One other thing I do want to say, I think I'm very proud of Arts Alive as an organization for maintaining what we did during the COVID cutbacks, right in the middle of our season. We had two shows that did not get produced, although people had paid for them and were expecting to see them. We kept after those artists, and in our last year, we had not only the five traditional, but we also plugged in the two that were missed in during twenty twenty. So the people got their money's worth. We kept them in touch with what was happening and when those programs were going to be rescheduled. I thought that was really commendable for the leadership of Arts Alive, and I'm proud to be a part of that. Have been since the very beginning. We're glad to have someone like Linda with us. So any other question?
Yeah, I I think I'll ask it for the upper part. Uh even though I live in West Point, they've all, we've always, the board itself have asked about doing events up here, and y'all still working on that?
Yeah, um right, right. Near the end of the comments that we made, the VMFA automobile, we were this close to getting it scheduled to bring it up here to the upper county, King William. And COVID just shot that all down. At this point, I'm not even sure that they're reorganizing for the automobile. And I myself spoke up at least two times and said, okay, we did West Point, we did New Kent, next has got to be King William. And that's where we were about the time everything got unplugged.
They did mention that as the last four meetings, they are working on trying to fix that.
Uh no, I mean, my 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 daughter's uh participated in the programs the last couple of years. They won't be able to do the Missoula Art Camp this year because of timing with uh vacation, uh unfortunately, but uh they did that a couple of years ago and had a great time.
That's your fault.
Well, it's West Point Public Schools' fault for moving their opening date so far, but if you want to blame anybody, so we'll blame. Raise your son right there. We'll bring him in. But it's a great time. Uh all all the camps that that they do, uh and the performances, we've we've long supported them with our business as well. So. Yeah, we thank you for the services you do for not just the town, but the, you know, the county as well.
Thank you.
Tappahannock Community College is one of the twenty-three college colleges that comprise the Virginia Community College system. RCC serves twelve counties with campuses in Glenns and Warsaw. The organization is requesting nine thousand seventy-two in operating funds. The operating funds combined with funds from the other eleven counties in the service region will fund maintenance of campus in a safe and attractive manner, expected by the students, faculty, staff, and local citizens. I will now welcome Dr. Kennedy and Ms. Walker to the podium.
And note that it's only a two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollar increase, right?
Legal Aid Works provides free representation in civil legal matters for low-income residents for King William County. This matter consists of evictions, um these matters consist of eviction or foreclosures, foreclosure matters, denial of social security benefits, or family law matters such as custody, support, or domestic violence protection order hearing. Legal Aid Works receives support from various local, state, and federal governments as well as private fund, private foundation and individual donor, sorry. The organization is respectfully requesting level funding, and I now will invite Mrs. Ms. Spencer to the podium.
Good evening. I am not Ms. Spencer. I am, however, Ann Klockner. I am the executive director at Legal Aid Works. Tara Spencer is my hard-working grants manager. Uh, we have been serving King William County since nineteen seventy-nine. I particularly like coming here to make sure that you understand how valuable your support is and how much we appreciate every year your willingness to help support our work. We are asking for that magic word, level funding. We understand all too well what it's like to try to make tough decisions to balance a budget. Our office in Tappahannock covers seven counties. We represent low-income people who need an attorney in civil legal matters. We're the only agency providing this service. In your county, there are one thousand four hundred and seventy eligible low-income persons who could qualify for our services. In the last five fiscal years, we have assisted one hundred and ninety-three of your citizens, an average of about thirty-eight clients per year. We attempt to take the strain off the social services safety net by lifting clients out of poverty with enforceable court orders of child and spousal support as well as social security disability appeals, which the clients would not have won otherwise without our legal intervention. We help the county court system run efficiently by helping those who can't afford an attorney. Any judge will tell you that the people who represent themselves slow the system down. And when they have attorneys, it actually makes it more efficient. We also help law enforcement by working with victims of domestic violence to obtain civil protective orders. I always come here with brochures so that when you encounter a constituent of yours who might need our services, you're going to be knowledgeable about how you can refer somebody to our program. So I'd be happy to leave those here tonight. And I welcome any questions.
And did you not, your organization, come to the courthouse and meet with people?
Yes.
I thought that's who you were. And with that, most of these folks are older and probably don't have the funds for for legal fees. That, if it was thirty-eight clients, it's only a hundred and forty-three dollars each. Is that about right?
And that's a pretty good rate for lawyers.
It's a very good rate.
For sure. Uh one of the things that we try to do, we recognize that serving seven counties from Tappahannock, we want to make sure we're doing outreach into the community. That's why we try to establish hours at uh other locations. We have a paralegal who goes to Delmarnic for office hours at the Free Clinic. Uh we have a location, I think it's a Baptist church in Eastville, uh where we do some uh office hours as well. We're really trying to reach out into the communities because the people we serve, as you very. As you very well pointed out, are not able to afford. Even gas money to get up to Tappahannock. So we try to get out into the community as much as we possibly can. This is our fiftieth anniversary. We started in Fredericksburg in nineteen seventy-three. And. In celebrating our fiftieth anniversary, our goal this year is to have a know your rights presentation. In every single one of the seventeen counties that we serve. So I'm very much looking forward to setting something up so that we can come into this community and. Make sure that people know and understand their rights, rights as tenants, rights as citizens in this county.
I'm very, you hit the ones that y'all meet at the courthouse with. And at that price.
It's a great, it's a great service, you know, it's. It's nothing but good there.
We're happy to do it. Thank you.
I'm, I'm the son-in-law of a former public defender. I know that's not what they do, but he always believed that the, the law in the right hands could save lives. And yeah, and I've, I've known of y'all's work for a long time. John Relic was a good, longtime friend of mine with the school with his son Josh, so. I've long known of your work and long admired it, so thank you for.
If we could work out that cloning technology for Mr. Relic, we'd be all set. He is one of a kind.
He truly is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Service Board provides a multitude of services to individuals with behavioral health and development needs. These services are provided throughout the ten counties of the Middle Peninsula and Northern Neck of Virginia. The organization is requesting an increase of seventeen point one percent for FY twenty-four to meet ten percent match from state funding. I'll welcome Ms. Hodges to the podium for any questions the board might have.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll start there. It just highlights some of the things that we have done in the last year and we have highlighted an individual. The individual who was addicted probably since the age of eleven to alcohol and drugs. His mother would give him. Instead of crying, give him drugs. And he finally turned his life around with the assistance of some of our services. And he's now working part-time for us. You'll see his mugshot, so to speak, and then his, his healthy complexion. And that's just one of the many things that we're highlighting. Each of the forty community services boards are highlighted there. And each has only one page dedicated, but I think we hold our own quite well against Richmond City. Chesapeake, as well as other rural communities. So. Already the, my headline seventeen point one percent increase we're requesting. And the reason we're requesting that is that the code says. That localities need to match our state funding by ten percent. We've not had, I'm not sure if we've ever had the ten percent match. We have historically used in-kind donations. To meet that match, but that has dwindled over the years. Since we no longer have therapeutic day treatment in the schools. We use in-kind as far as office space. We're no longer in the Northern Neck jail. We use that office space as in-kind donations. So the board decided to take a leap of faith and request. This seventeen point one percent increase, so we would have the ten percent match, which is what, again, the code says. So you do have information already. I'm not going to go through all of that, but we did provide you the services that we have offered in the ten counties. And, and information about an unduplicated count. We have almost four, four hundred people that were served in King William. It dwindled a little bit from the previous year, but I, when I saw those numbers, I was ecstatic because we have had a significant workforce issue. Over the last twelve to eighteen months. So our staff is still providing significant services, even though. We do not have as many outpatient therapists as, as we have physicians for. Additionally, I do want to point out what I call the wage impact on the county. That means the individuals who work for the Community Services Board that reside in King William. That is, as you can see from the, the information I shared, over six hundred and forty thousand dollars, almost six hundred and forty-four thousand. And so these individuals are contributing back to King William County and in their purchases. The other interesting piece of data I'd like to provide is the self-pay. Last year when I was here, it was at thirty-five percent of the individuals from King William who came to us for services. Thirty-five percent of those individuals were on the sliding fee scale self-pay. That dwindled to twenty-eight percent. So we have less individuals from King William receiving services on sliding fee scale. I do expect that to increase next year because as I think you're well aware, there's going to be a. A review of all the individuals on Medicaid in the next two months. And I suspected that there's going to be a lot of people that will no longer be on Medicaid, I think I said Medicare, Medicaid. And will go, then have to return to the sliding fee scale for self-pay. So at this point, I will just open it up to any questions you might have for me.
I'll start. I was going to ask the question about the wage impact. Is that, it sounds like it must be rather subjective.
No, we pull that data. No, we, from the employees that we have at our agency that live in King William. It's their salaries total in totality and that changes every year. Our staff goes through that and pulls that information out. Now, it, obviously it can be, you know, when we pulled it, it's a snapshot of that day. Now today it could be very different because staff come and go.
How many individuals was this?
I don't know. I can't, I couldn't tell you that. I, I will ask for that next year, but I've never asked for that. Excuse me?
That, that's, that's what I was going to ask.
That's a good question. I, I will.
Could you take it back and then shoot Mr. Ashburn?
Absolutely.
Ms. Brown?
Sure.
This is another organization I'm familiar with, through, through friends that have spent time in there and just highlighting the, the same family that I just highlighted, Betsy Donahue. I think she just retired.
Oh, she did.
Right?
Yes, she did.
I've been friends with for a long time, so. You know, these guys handle some really challenging cases, really, really. Difficult. Cases and clients and. Put in a lot of, of care and effort and time to, to try to get these people well, so. It's tough work, so. Again, an organization that I've long been familiar with, long admired the work that they do. And I, and I'm happy with where you guys are right now, too.
Thank you.
The organizational shifts that have, that have happened and.
Thank you.
Not all, but everybody was pleased with it. I think, I think the last couple of years have shown that you guys are on solid ground, so.
I, I appreciate.
Yeah.
You pointing that out. You know, I do want to point out, we do, to follow up on what you said. You know, we have an ACT program which is in Gloucester and that's for the individuals who. Have not historically had success in staying out of psychiatric hospitals. But because we travel to their homes, we provide nursing, we provide, you know, all the services they need, whether it's mental health. Slash psychiatric care or it's physical health, we provide all their needs, take medication to them. We have at least one individual, I would say in the upper part of King William County, that they're so committed to. That they go out of their way. It's really not in our radius, so to speak, but they've been so committed to this individual. And it's not perfect success, but this individual has, has reduced significantly the number of times he's been incarcerated. Reduced significantly the number of times he's had to go to a psychiatric hospital. So it works. It's expensive program, but it works, but that staff was feel so committed to this one individual. That they're willing to take one day out of a week to travel to his home to make sure that, you know, to provide his medications and to check in with him. Any other questions do I have? Okay, thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Free River Health District is Virginia Department of Health District for the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula regions. It is the duty of the district to protect the health and promote the wealth being of all people, animals, and wildlife that inhabit and enjoy all the district has to offer. The organization strives to provide healthy, safe, and sustainable environment for all. Free River Health District is requesting one six, one thousand one hundred sixty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-six for FY twenty-four, which is an increase of nine thousand one hundred and twelve. And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Ribbon Bark to podium.
I also have materials for you all. My name is Brendan Ribbon Bark and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the district and we are the Walmart of human services where you can get a septic permit and a vaccine in the same place. We are asking for about a ten thousand dollar increase this year and that's a result of, as folks will recall, the J-Large study that. Increased the cooperative budget shift to localities over a three-year period, but. The twenty-four increase is the last of that, of that phasing increase, so moving forward, the county will be at that forty-five percent max, the cooperative budget.
So it's less of a request as it is FY.
It, it, it's a request to, to, to match that increase.
Right, but this, this is. It's difficult to explain the, 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 the banner, the, the budget, how it interlocks, but you know, it's a state agency that operates, you know, at, at the local level. And we've got a responsibility to match. Certain amount of the budget, so. Yes, Congress.
And, and all of our localities except for one where we're hit by about a, a ten percent increase phase over three years.
I noticed, Mr. Moskowski, they do a septic pump out program that duplicates, it sounds like, PDC.
So the, the pump out program is actually going to be the health department's oversight of the five. The requirement that individuals within the Chesapeake Pay Preservation Act have their system pumped out once or inspected once every five years. The PDC and us have partnered to actually provide funding for septic and well repairs, but it's a, it's a different.
Right, so they're the enforcement agency of what creates the need for the PDC to operate the. Septic pump out voucher program that they do for low-income individuals.
And that was, that's actually an authority that's shifting from the locality over to the health department effective July one of this year. And that's actually paid for a hundred percent in, in general funds.
I'm just, I'm glad to see the, the increase in King William. Citizens taking advantage of it. Finally, we're getting our money's worth out of PDC. In one way.
Anyone else?
I'm good. What's Dr. Williams' nickname?
His nickname? I won't say that.
You can't, they told me. He was a flight surgeon during the war and he got to ride in a high-performance jet. Things happen on high-performance jets that.
He's the world's most interesting man.
You would, you would not say. Never.
No, I think so. Okay, thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act provides consequences for juveniles' behavior. As well as a basic understanding of responsibility, accountability, and good work habits. Participation in the community service programs give juveniles an opportunity to give back to the community. Through time and effort to area nonprofit organizations and government agencies. BJ triple C A funding is a combination of state funds and local non-security detention expenses. The direct services that the program provides assist in keeping detention costs down for localities. By supplying an alternative option in lieu of more restrictive sanctions and residential care. The program serves Charles City, King and Queen, King William, Middlesex, and New Kent Counties. BJ triple C A is requesting level funding for FY twenty-four. I'll now invite Mrs. Fraser to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
The pleasure to see you guys again. We're just asking for level funding as always. We hope to do big things as usual with that. I do want to toss out that cost of detention. Detention is two hundred and ninety-two dollars a day. And by me providing services such as electronic monitoring and intensive supervision. Where I keep the juveniles here in their homes, we're not paying that exorbitant amount of money for those juveniles. However, I do want to lift up to you that since we have been doing intensive supervision and electronic monitoring. For the last fifteen years, we have not had an increase in that program. And so for FY twenty-four, we will be increasing our fee in that program. All of the monies that we charge the localities for, for intensive supervision. And electronic monitoring goes straight back into the program. That's where we have the money saved to buy the new car, like you granted us permission to do earlier this year. Or earlier in FY twenty-three, where we pay staff salaries. We, you know, increase that gas cost that hit us this year and all of those wonderful things we do, so. What the. State did this year was they required us to ensure that all our intensive supervision and electronic monitoring. Had a part of the program that was called outreach where we would go to the homes. We basically were doing that anyway, but now it is a requirement that we go out to the home. So what we're going to do is charge a flat fifty dollars for intensive supervision. And electronic monitoring for the outreach portion of our program. And then we will charge the actual cost that cost us to rent that monitor per day. And right now their cost is about three dollars and fifty cents a day. So the cost for the monitor will go to fifty-three fifty from fifty-two fifty. And the price of intensive supervision for FY twenty-four will go from forty-two fifty to fifty dollars. And that's about all we're going to do differently, except for maybe try to add some new programs.
Did you say level funding?
Yeah.
It's level local funding. We charge all the localities. All of the localities for the intensive supervision and the electronic monitoring program. So instead of. The two hundred and ninety-two dollars a day to put a child in detention, we, that comes out of your non-secured detention costs.
All right, so I'm still confused. You're showing a thirty-six, thirty-six four ninety-one increase. That's not all King William's?
It's not all King William, no.
Can you tell us how much of that would be King William's?
Level.
King William pays eighteen, King William pays eighteen eight fifty, I believe is what it is. As your portion to participate in the BJ triple C A programs.
And, and that is level, correct?
That would be level. Yes, that's what you pay to participate in the program. Okay, then all of the counties, based on the number of juveniles that, that are placed in. Intensive supervision and electronic monitoring per locality. intensive supervision and electronic monitoring per locality. So like right now, King William has five children in intensive supervision. Okay, so I would bill you for those five children and then I bill New Kent for their four children. And I would bill Charles City if they had children for their children every month. And those children make up that additional fund, those additional funds.
Either you or Natasha, can you tell us what our portion is?
There's been a thing since before that.
Okay, um, but her, her revenues are anticipated to increase for electronic monitoring. So that's one portion of why her, what revenue is going to increase. It's not going to be any of the local customers, so Charles City, New Kent, New Kent, King William will always, they're still paying the same amount for their, their local shares. But she has an increase in that, you were talking about the monitoring fees. That is going to, her revenue will increase to offset some of these additional expenses. And then, um, she's also using some of the fund balance from her fund that, that has been building because of electronic monitoring. But the localities in the state have not changed their share of the basic supervision program. It's all revenues that are addition to those, the state and county portions is probably electronic monitoring.
Just confusion on here.
Well, I mean, if you look at revenues at the top of the page, that's where you're going to find your answer. So electronic monitoring fees, revenues that she's got increasing to about thirteen thousand dollars a year, every year.
I was looking at this one sheet.
And then, right, 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 but you gotta, you gotta look, you gotta go in here and find it here because the local, you know, the transfer of the general fund, level, level, level. The electronic monitoring fees, she's anticipating a thirteen thousand dollar increase in revenues from that over the course of the entire budget. That not just, not just King William's share, but the entire budget. And then as Natasha pointed out, it's about a twenty-two thousand dollar, uh, increase year over year in the use of her fund balance. And then a revenue base.
I was just looking at this one that's got everybody on.
Oh.
And that's the one that's a little, little confusion, but that's okay, good. We're at eighteen eight fifty plus any that we have any intensive care.
Any that you have and, and that, that usually comes out of your non-secured detention costs.
How many staff, Ms. Fraser?
Not enough. Um, we have, as of March first, I have three full-time people and one person who works twenty-nine hours a week. And we cover five localities and as you know, there's a long locality. And we provide ten different programs to those.
So you don't have perhaps staff in these five, four of the counties? You do it all from here?
The four of us handle all of it. We, we handle all of it. I, I say that I got new staff effective, well, another part-time person effective March first because our incre, uh, we had a serious increase in intensive supervision and electronic monitoring. And on top of that, with the new requirement to make sure that we're doing what the state requires as outreach program. It was just out there. But we teach law-related education, which is a total of four groups. Uh, four two-hour groups to each of the individuals in that program. We teach substance abuse education, which is six groups, two hours long. We teach, um, a new program that is anger management control, that is eight two-hour groups. And then we facilitate the community service work. Sometimes we get lucky and we will have an organization that will supervise the community service work. Sometimes we have to do it ourselves. We had a wonderful car wash here in King William not too long ago. The kids complained that it was a little cool, but they washed cars. Um, we've washed cars in, uh, in New Kent. Um, we, we, we do whatever needs to be done to get our kids through the programs and through the, um, you know, through whatever the court requires them to do. New that the courts have added is, um, marijuana used to be a charge that went before the court all the time. Um, now it is not, they're doing that as diversion programs. So that gets kicked back to me a little earlier that has increased my substance abuse education, um, groups. And, uh, so we're busy every day, all day, we're busy. But we get it done. And Mr. Ashcraft, I'll be sending this out to you shortly. Um, in my, we have to do an annual program, um, evaluation for the, for the state and my program, community service work. Um, I have a ninety-seven percent satisfaction rate. Law-related education, substance abuse education, electronic monitoring and supervision plan services. I have a one hundred percent satisfaction rate. And in my intensive supervision, I have a ninety-two percent satisfaction rate. So I'm very proud of the work that my staff and I do. We do a good job, but I'll be sending this out to Mr. Ashcraft so he can share.
I'm proud of you too.
Thank you. We work hard, but we love what we do.
Yeah, I know you do. And thanks, thanks for everything you did.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Included in the board's agenda are the additional requests from outside agencies. That's the last item under this, um, under outside agency. Are there any questions regarding the summary of the additional outside agencies?
What is, go ahead. What is Med Flight Chestville County?
That is, uh, for fire and EMS's airlift and they base it on the number of.
But they're out of Chester.
Yeah, we pay.
We don't, we don't have one in, uh, King William.
No.
I thought they had one assigned over there. We used to, didn't we? I saw it.
Am I mistaken, but when, when you call for a med flight, whatever's available, it doesn't necessarily mean it would be Chesterfield, is that correct? Or?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't.
It is out, it is out of Chesterfield, Mr. Warren. Sure, it is out of Chesterfield.
Yeah, I, I know, but if, if you, if you have an emergency call a med flight, it doesn't necessarily mean, are, are we at the mercy of whether they can do it or?
It's expensive, that's all.
Yeah, I know, I had a friend whose, whose wife had a massive stroke and he was told that depended on, uh, who responded. You know, the, the physical cost and it was astronomical.
I mean, I think there's, there's one out of Southwest I know that just made the news because they hard build and they pay somebody six figures for a truck.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know, I know there used to be one in, at Middle Peninsula Airport, I don't know if that's still there or not. I don't know what the association is that we, we pay to this one, I don't, uh, because they are, um, in some instances operated by hospitals, in some instances operated by independent outfits, it depends on what they are. You know, the biggest thing I see in here was we've got two, two biggest increases are jail and VIPS. Those are pretty, those are pretty, pretty big chunks. Uh, you know, we know the jails always kind of move in target, it depends on how many are in there.
Well, in the bottom line on that, even though it would be nice if they could cut back, but you can't cut back a lot, even if your numbers go down. You know, getting personnel back.
Oh, I know, I mean, that's just one of those things that you have to.
It's, it, it's expensive.
Yeah. Um, now, now VIPS, Steve, I know you're on that board, you want to talk about that for a minute, where all this come from?
Um, sure, most of it, um, is coming. One, they're increasing salaries because a lot of them are at, um, minimum wage, so that's been having to go up in recent years. Um, there's also, um, several new positions. Um, and the biggest chunk is that they did a, Mr. Magin did a study of their capital, all their equipment and what they put aside each year to maintain that and what they would have to do with lifespan to replace it. And that's gone up tremendously. Um, so that, and fuel cost is really the biggest expense increases. The first, uh, budget that was put to the VIPS board, uh, had a larger increase. And everyone at the table agreed it was justifiable, but no one was going to be willing to go up that much. And said, you need to step this up, uh, do a step increase. If we have to pay more to replace equipment and we don't, aren't looking at replacing something next year, then let's look at, um, stepping up that increase rather than just all of a sudden putting it all in there.
The VIPS on it saying that, that's a two hundred thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, with the bribes, are we, uh, we've never given them any money before?
Uh, we have not given them money in the past several years. They had an organizational kerfuffle, uh, let's just say, that caused us, uh, and caused the people that supported that organization at the time, notably the Commonwealth attorney to not be comfortable supporting that organization anymore. They've changed leadership several years ago. Um, I, I don't know if there would be any value in their services to, or, or, or not. We might, that, that's something probably to ask our law enforcement community and our Commonwealth attorney if that's something that they would find value in. Previously, it's something we did find tremendous value in, but then, um, there were, there were problems there, enough to cause sufficient concern for us to say we weren't going to support them anymore. So I don't know if that's just a hole that exists that we've not filled. I don't know that they've found other organizations to fill that need that thrive as, uh, you know, traditionally built. Um, you know, I do still have friends that work in the organization at lower levels that are still out there working hard in the communities that they're serving. Um, but I, I don't know if we achieved sufficient comfort with the leadership to say that we would want to support them again or not, but I'm not the one to answer that question.
Can we get to breakdown on the King William General District Court, the seventeen thousand dollar inquiry?
Yes, it should be in there, um.
Well, it's.
It looks like capital, uh, when they're talking about.
Um, the majority of that, uh, their request for the county to salary, to supplement their salary. The board has never historically done that, so that, they always put it in though.
Oh, okay. But I mean, it didn't really break it down what you're asking for on what I'm looking at. The sheet that I'm, on, on their increase in salary, is it just a supplemental?
Line item for every single one of them, um, it should have been in the, there should be a.
It may be in here, we got a lot of papers here.
Yes, you do, but I can definitely, if you give me, I can pull it up on my computer really quick if you want.
What is it, one of three? Is that something we just added to it?
No, no, it would have been in the.
It doesn't actually break, it's just, uh, salary supplement. I guess, I guess what I'm really getting at is, is when we're looking at it, if, if we're cutting anything, how do we cut and what is, what are we cutting when we cut it?
Well, last year's budget was eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty and this year's ask is twenty-nine, four eighty-two.
That's what caught my eye. All right, anything else on that part? Steven, down your way, anything? No.
Yeah, it was sixteen thousand dollar salary supplement, sixteen thousand dollar request for salary supplement. So the majority of it is that.
For one person, few people, so.
For the general district, yes.
I heard they've asked for that a few times.
Yeah, they always do. Never heard sad.
Can't get turned down, let's see.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, are you up now?
I am.
We having some good news, I heard?
Yeah, I think so. We have the revenue projections to share with the board. So included in tonight's agenda is fiscal year twenty twenty-four revenue projection. The general fund accounts for all revenues and expenditures related to general operations of the county and they are not accounted for in other funds. This fund includes most traditional local government programs such as police, library, fire and rescue, parks, human services, et cetera. The general fund also includes transfer payments to school, county debt service, and capital improvement funds. We can break down the revenue sources to the general fund into three categories. Local revenue, state revenue, and federal revenues. Real estate is the largest source of local revenue for the general fund. And this slide you're looking at right now is the summary overall for all the funding for the general fund. To move to the next slide. Real estate is the largest source of local revenue for the general fund. The twenty twenty-three reassessment has been completed. The new assessed values for the, from the results of the completion of the reassessment will be what the tax rate for twenty twenty-three will be based on. Once the reassessment is complete, state law requires that the tax rate be equalized. It is the responsibility of the board of supervisors to determine the budgetary needs of the county and the tax rate necessary to effectively meet those needs. Mr. Hudgens will now speak on the equalization product, progress, uh, process and the results.
Good evening, gentlemen. I would just like to walk us through this process of how staff came about the equalization rate. Um, and just make sure that we're all on the same page with equalization. It means lowering the tax rate in equal proportion to the increase in property value such that rev, tax revenues due to the reassessment not increase greater than one percent. So new construction, new discoveries, things of that nature are pulled out of this calculation. They don't have anything to do with it, it should be as much as possible, like for like, apples to apples. If your house was X last year and increased fifty percent for no other reason other than the reassessment, then the tax rate on average should drop proportionally, the fifty percent.
Does that include that, I guess, improvements, renovations, additions?
As much as possible, those get pulled out. Um, now, if we don't have the means to pull something out, if hardwood floors got added and there's no way to really tell that, then.
I guess I was thinking of corporate more than any.
Um, if it's identifiable, yes, and we've done, um, run reports to figure out. One, we've collected all the new construction, all the COs and finals in this last year. If they were previous year and it had a CO, then it's been on the tax books, that's part of the equalization. But everything built in twenty-two, that got closed out in twenty-two, um, we ran a report, um, to pull those, the, those numbers out. Um, we ran a report, commissioner, I should say, um, ran reports to identify, um, all new outbuildings. Um, it's been brought up before, the outbuildings have not been, um, put on the, the books since the last reassessment. So, um, if we identified where a property had no, a zero for an outbuilding in twenty-two and had, had value in twenty-three, then we've collected all of those and pulled those numbers out as well. Um, new parcel creation that gets pulled out. And it should be noted that land use value is what is put in. It is the taxable value of properties and land use that is part of the calculation, not the fair market value of properties and land use. That's, um, that's direct from the State Department, we had a question about that and, uh, confirmed with them that that was how we should, uh, run the calculation. uh, run the calculations. In fact, all of these, they still need to be vetted by the State Department. Um, but it has been a lot of back and forth conversations with them to make sure we are using the right numbers and uh, especially uh, due to the split levy throwing a little extra wrinkle into it for us. Um, it means that we have two tax rates that need to be equalized, the countywide rate as well as the school district tax rate. Um, and that was the process for each one. We um, for the countywide rate, that's districts one through five. Uh, the rate, as you see, well, I mean, it was thirty eight cents last year, total taxable value, one point seven billion, tax amount was about six and a half million. Tax re- or the reassessment value, again, that's pulling out all those uh, new constructions and extras uh, came in at two point four seven billion. Tax amount would have been nine point two nine million if there was no equalization, difference being two point eight million or a percent change of about forty four percent. To equalize that, it would drop to twenty six cents as a tax rate. And this, as you can see, the percent change is actually less than zero. So as much as it's the rule that it has to be within one percent, that doesn't mean that we get one percent growth. That means we set a tax rate that is as close as possible to that. Um, within a half a cent without going over one percent. It's actually below what the revenues were last year. Um.
So the last one, say that.
It's below what the revenues off of these properties were last year. Um, that tax rate. Which, that doesn't take everything into consideration with actual revenues, but that is what rev uh, equalization calculations take into consideration. Um, same process for the school district. Um, so that would be districts two through five. That's got a different tax base. We're only adding up all the values within those districts. The rate last year was forty six cents. And um, percent change due to the equalization, due to uh, the reassessment would have been forty four percent. Um, a little bit higher than the county at large, but still about forty four percent uh, higher tax um, than last year without equalization. Um, equalized rate would be thirty two cents. Um, this again would be very close to zero percent change of point two two. Um, that's giving us a combined equalized rate for citizens outside uh, West Point of fifty eight cents. Um, any questions on the equalization?
It's just recommend them uh, rate?
No. Fifty eight cents is a recommended rate.
That's what I mean.
Fifty eight cents is a recommended rate, yes, but I would like to go to the next slide. I'll let Natasha dig into the numbers of this, but I did want to touch on um, what we're looking at. We have said fifty eight cents with the, with our proposal here. Uh, fifty eight cents is the total number that we are looking at as a, as the school district plus countywide rate. However, what I was shown before was a twenty six cents county rate plus a thirty two cent school rate. What we are showing is a thirty cent county rate and a twenty eight cent school rate. So that is plus minusing on the two rates, even though the total is fifty eight. Separately, they've switched. This was done because it's, we believed it was a more even distribution of the revenues rather than.
We've talked about it before.
Mm-hmm, exactly. And rather than building up a school district restricted funds, shorting the county, this would be more evenly distributed. And so I just wanted to touch on that before I let Natasha continue uh, with. If there are any other questions on it?
The only thing that I'd like to uh, have supplied is for those who constantly find fault for us. The fifty eight cents, if if that's where we stay at, how does that compare to the other localities? You you know, these people out here that always trash as ten ways to Sunday, I think we're gonna be fair real well.
We'll have that, Mr. Garber, in the presentation next Monday. We have about five or six different locality that we, we.
There are no other questions. I'll let Ms. Brown continue.
The projected revenue based on proposed tax rate of fifty eight cents, thirty cents per one hundred countywide, twenty eight cents per one hundred school levy would generate fourteen million for fiscal year twenty twenty four. And then the next slide, we'll talk about personal property taxes levied on vehicles and other tangible non-real estate property. With FY twenty three budget, a vehicle tax was created separate from the personal property tax rate. This decision was made due to the rise in vehicle values. The board's goal was to assist residents by reducing the tax on vehicles outside of personal property tax rate. The proposed vehicle tax rate for FY twenty four is three dollars and sixty five cents per one hundred. That would be one sixty five all districts, one sixty five per one hundred, and two dollars per one hundred school to, school levy. The King William County Commissioner of Revenue has shared communications from other locality commissioners. From the information provided, we anticipate a nineteen percent decline in values from last year for vehicles. And next slide. Machinery and tool taxes are levied on equipment needed in the manufacturing process. Machinery and tools tax revenues are projected to remain relatively the same for fiscal year twenty twenty four to be two point two million at the current tax rate of two twenty five per one hundred assessed value. That's a dollar per one hundred countywide, a dollar twenty five per one hundred school levy. Other local taxes consists, consists of sales tax, utility taxes, business taxes, motor vehicle license, food and beverage taxes. These taxes are projected to generate four point three million in revenues for fiscal year twenty four, which is an increase from FY twenty three. The increase is mainly due to the increase of local sales tax distribution from the Virginia Department of Taxation. Other local revenues include building and planning permit fees, use of money and property, charges for service, recovered costs, and other miscellaneous, miscellaneous items. Other local revenue is anticipated to bring in an increase of three hundred sixty two thousand three hundred sixty three compared to FY twenty three. This increase is attributed to bank interest rate increases. State revenue consists of the following: overall state non-categorical revenues are projected to total one point five million, which is consistent with FY twenty three budget. State share funding source is projected to increase two hundred ninety thousand, ninety one thousand nine hundred twenty over the fiscal year twenty twenty three adopted budget. The projected revenue is based on a five percent increase from the Compensation Board for Constitutional Officers and their comp board funded positions. State categorical aid revenue is projected to total one hundred thirty thousand five hundred, an increase of thirty nine thousand from fiscal year FY twenty three budget. Included in this estimate of revenues is funding for the Circuit Court Grant for Records Preservation and Funds for the Bulletproof Best Grant. Federal aid is projected to be one hundred sixty thousand five hundred twenty seven. This anticipated revenue relatively consistent with FY twenty three, factoring no longer receiving DMV grant. And that's all I have to, for the revenues. Are there any questions?
So uh, soon we are going back to the three sixty five personal, personal property.
We're going to need to do that, yeah. Well, we, we are recommending that, yes.
And I'm reading the verbiage. It says, based on information from other localities commission.
Sure.
What did we contact the other commissioners?
It was an email, I think, just they, I guess they have a group commissioner, commissioners group, and they, it was an email. I think Lynchburg was one of them. And it was just kind of reaching out to all the commissioners, letting them know where they were standing with the vehicle assessed values.
And going back to the, I guess it's page eight, the front of what I've got here. Says the Compensation Board will support a five percent salary increase. Are they providing it?
Yes.
I just know how they are.
Yes, yeah, that was actually in um, the information that we received last year too, that we were going to get that in FY twenty three and FY twenty four.
So does everybody understand the thought behind rebalancing the real estate? Because we've gone, we've gone through this a few times, but I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page because uh, it's in another states here, she's not gonna let me go over there. Uh, you know, I I've got the legislation pulled up here and it'll, if you want to go through it, it lists the taxes that um, are collected in the county exclusive of the town that we can, but by the very nature of the legislation we've established, we have to uh, devote a hundred percent to the school system, otherwise we're, again, we're artificially inflating, we're deflating the rate of the counties. So the only way for the county side of the ledger to benefit from growth on the side of of those revenues is to rebalance that real estate rate to account for.
Thirty percent and twenty eight.
Precisely, precise. So that's, that's, that's the reason for that is because for a while now, we've seen, you know, growth on, on those revenues that we've done.
We've discussed it many minutes.
Just making sure we're on the same page, because we've gone a few times. I've got the legislation pulled up if anybody wants to know the taxes.
Anybody else get a question, though?
We can debate whether or not, how much we actually want to do with it. I think it's probably a reasonable thing that the place to start, but that's.
Uh, yeah, I'm with you on that, but I also think that meals tax is also an option. If I'm not mistaken, that's not written in stone so far as automatically going to the schools. Correct?
Item eleven, food and beverage taxes.
Right, so that, are you seeing that automatically goes to the schools?
So by, by the name of the legislation, the legislation says shall, all right, which gives us the option. However, if we choose not to take a portion of a tax that we collect outside of the town and put it towards the schools, then we're putting it on the general fund side, which means that we're taking taxes that are collected exclusively from non-West Point taxpaying people. And we're applying it to things that West Point's paying for as well on the general funds. That means that they're paying a rate lower than they should for their fair share of the service. So when it, when it breaks out these taxes, it says that we, we have the uh, the, the, the ability to do it if we choose not to do it. Like we, we've discussed this before, because a couple of budgets ago, there was some proposal to do.
Yeah, I I remember that, but it, is it an option? Is it anything in, in that uh, piece of legislature that you're reading that says it has to go?
What I'm telling you is that nothing's, nothing says that any of this has to go.
Right.
But it's just pointing out the things that are collected outside of the pen exclusively within the county. And all of those revenues that are identified in this paragraph, the, to fight it, is kind of de facto have to go to the schools. The, the, the way that the formula is calculated and the way that the legislation.
Would you, would you please share that reference later on?
Yeah, I'd like to see that too. I don't have it.
I guess my, my thoughts and question regardless of what that it's saying there. If we appropriate four hundred and fifty thousand from whatever line item, meat bowl, whatever it is, if it comes in at five hundred thousand a week, have to.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And year round, we do a reconciliation.
On that side.
That's, that's, I thought we talked about that we didn't have to on certain things, because the line items.
Precisely, nothing, nothing says that we have to. This all says that we have the option.
Just sounds like a contradiction.
Right, no, 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 my point is, my point is that if we choose not to, which is something we proposed the other year. And Steve's gone through this, this exercise with me before. If you take money off of, let's say, B pole, all right? And you take it out of the school fund and you put it on the general fund side, which we had the option to do, and it does not run afoul of the split left. However, say you take a hundred thousand dollars of that money and you put it on the general fund side of the ledger, well, you are paying with money that was collected, not a dime from a West Point taxpayer, because they've got their own B poll that, that they don't contribute to us. All right, it was collected from a King William taxpayer. All right, and you're using it to pay for a service that's paid for out of the general fund, which West Point contributes to. All right, so you're taking a hundred thousand dollars of money that was not collected from a dime from the taxpayer in town. And you're using it to pay for services that benefit them.
Okay.
Well, so, 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 so we just hired a economic director. And if, if he goes out, so, so it was no incentive for him to go out and pursue restaurants, anything that sells food.
That's not, that's not correct anyway, because every time that we see growth in one of those funds, we're getting growth on the school side of the fund. However, when we get to the point that it's exceeding the needs of the school systems, to the extent that it could ever, that it can do that, or that it becomes imbalanced to where we're, we're struggling, this is how you have to rebalance. You gotta rebalance it through the real estate.
Okay, okay, I'm wishing that, hey.
It just seemed to be more logical to declare four hundred thousand, four fifty, whatever the average has been for the last five, ten years. So that the schools can better budget.
And you could capture the future growth. It is a growth.
It is the inherent conundrum of the split level, yes, is that by the nature of how those taxes have to be collected and allocated. You want to speak on it? I've gotten you on.
Well, let's just, let's just ask you this. Are you at a different place than what he just said?
I don't think it should.
Well.
I think it has to be one or the other. You have to either. You're, you're making the policy that's every dime that is coming out of anything in districts two through five goes to the school and therefore the only way to, to see growth or to help the tax burden on all these non-problems, B pole, meals, all these others, the only way to help, see that help is to readjust the real estate ratio. If you are not a hard line, if it's not coming out of West Point, if it's a meals tax and um, and central garage, and that can possibly go to pay for something else, it's not breaking the split levy.
That's correct. No, it doesn't run afoul of the split levy too, Alan. My, my point is that the, what it does run afoul of is the idea within the split levy that taxes collected exclusively in King William don't benefit the town's co- collection or offset the town's rate in any way and vice versa.
What happens, and excuse me, I'm not fully up to speed here still, but what happens if we lower just the food tax rate?
Without doing anything else? Without doing anything else, if you lower the food tax rate, then the schools collect less money on, on the left.
Does it?
But that doesn't help anybody, right?
Or B pole or anything else to decrease the rates.
It's like, but all you're doing at that point in time, that, that's a whole other exercise. What, what I'm just trying to demonstrate here is that the reason that it makes sense to rebalance the rate, or the reason that you have to rebalance the rate in order to um, to realize the growth in the other, in the other funds is because um, it, it does hamstring it better the way that the split levy legislation had to, had to be written or was written in any case. Yeah, I mean, it all becomes a question of a policy matter for this board. Do you care if, if the, the way that that actually shakes out is that the West Point tax rate is lower than, than it probably should otherwise be? I mean, but that for me, problem with that is that's the reason we got to the place that we were in the first place, because we were not allocating. I mean, remember, this all came from PPTRA. We weren't giving any of the PPTRA to schools. All right, we were putting it all on the general fund side and we were able to math out that by doing that, the general fund side of the levy was artificially low, the school fund side of the levy was artificially high, so ostensibly West Point taxpayers were paying less than their fair share to operate the government. Well, taxpayers in two through five were paying more than their fair share to operate the schools.
And then going back to the uh, vehicle property tax rate, that can be adjusted as we did last year because it got so out of control. We took a dollar off, so that could be done again this year if the values don't decline as much or.
See, you're looking at used cars. I'm not seeing a drop in trucks, although.
That's six months.
It used to, it was a town when you, not, not too long ago, when you purchased a new vehicle, you were paying above sticker price. Simply because of the supply, the supply, it looks like the supply is coming back. You do see vehicles.
You might do that too, but I would not buy.
I know I'm not as smart as you Bill.
All right.
I'd also like to, to discuss. Offering other options to those vehicles such as trailers, RVs, et cetera. To look at that. Or add them to this, this class, that separate class that we did last year.
I think the commissioner came up with that, who's blessed and blessed, not him, right?
It was, it was easy to do. For her, relatively speaking.
So would that affect? The revenues as far as budget? If, if we do it in a drop, I guess is my question.
Well, I would think we would want to look at exactly the way that we looked at it last year. And if those. Values don't drop the way that the other commissioners are anticipating, we would set the rate at somewhere level. You know, as opposed to just taking a lot of, yeah.
Mr. Jim, can we go for another, is there a part, can we go over another part about the, the rate again? The question.
Sure, we can do anything, but what are you talking about today?
Like I said, they, they came up with a sort of an equalized rate countywide and school district wide. Both of them are so close, I should say it's forty four percent. That's the rate that we came up with on an average of everybody. And you said you took out all the one new construction and all that stuff. But talking to the citizens that are going to listen to us. Like I said, the cards were all over the place. So does this mean that let's just round it up? Anybody that got a forty four percent increase on their card. Would pay nothing extra. It would be exactly the same. Anybody that was less than forty four percent would pay less tax. Anybody over forty four percent would pay more taxes. We're all saying nobody's going to pay more this year because we have to equalize. But that's not true because.
Not true.
Everybody, right. Everybody's, it ranges from twenty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. So.
We've always said that it's going to be a bell curve.
Yeah, right, right. People, people are thinking that we said, oh, no, you're not, we're not going to pay more.
I think we've gone through is that bigger lengths we can, it's a bell curve, that they're in the middle. There's a trading edge and a leading edge.
Is that what it means? Forty four percent is the average?
That's correct.
Right. That's what everybody needs to know out there. So if your card says forty four percent. Or less, you're going to pay the same or less tax. If it's over forty four percent increase in any of your values, you're going to pay more.
Right.
Okay. I just want people to know that. And most of them that I've seen are all more so.
I did run a few statistics today just to take a look at it what, from what I could and. It was taken out new construction, um, that we had identified. I think it was fifty four hundred properties were above forty four percent and it's about fifty eight, fifty nine hundred were below forty four percent. But.
An assessment. Hadn't been done in nine years. So, I mean. I'm going to be honest that on our real estate. And they're about right. I mean. Well, we just purchased it not long ago. And I mean, it, you hit it right pretty much on the head. I would not sell it for what my old rate was. I mean, God, it, it was over a hundred thousand less at that point. And I, I saw where somebody posted that. Our taxes have gone up on real estate. I don't know where that came from because we haven't raised the tax rate. We've lowered it every year.
Because they're using A three, five on the current value. They're using point A three, five on the current value.
But they haven't even got a tax bill.
I know that.
You know, I mean.
They don't understand.
It's been, it's been since what, twenty fifteen, the last.
Twenty fourteen.
Well, the last legitimate reassessment, everybody's network. Many people's largest investment is their home. So their network has increased. If they look up the street, it, it's very few people in this Canada can't look up the street or the neighbor's house that, that's gone on the market recently. To do a good comparison. I really haven't heard any, any complaints myself.
I, I've just seen a few. I guess, you know, everything on Facebook is true. So, but, uh, several posts. But, uh, yeah, people that complain that, you know, and, and some of these people are jumping right on it, you know, uh, but it's not true. I've seen them complaining about. They just bought a piece of property and paid a certain amount. And the assessment was like ten thousand more when they did assessment. I mean, to me, that's within the ballpark. That's probably where it was at.
If we're going to boil down it, then we do have five more items in the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Oh my God.
Uh, it's already none.
Were you done on?
None of, uh, Ed dealing with the gray loads boats.
I'd like to consider.
I think I sent them to examine. I, I sent it over talking. I sent everybody just a link to the split level.
Okay, all right, all right. Is Mackenzie, I think is up next. The salary increases.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, this is just a preview of what the county administrator will be recommending. Um, and we're open for discussion if you have questions. Uh, county administrator will be recommending a five percent increase for staff. Um, historically, the last few years. Staff have been eligible for up to three and a half percent. Uh, that was a one and a half percent cola and a two percent merit. Uh, as everybody has made their presentation tonight and is fully aware. Um, three and a half percent hasn't really kept pace the last few years with the marketplace or inflation. So, uh, we are looking at recommending a two percent cola and up to a three percent merit for staff. There's a little chart that I've provided that just kind of gives you a breakout of increments to between that three and a half.
So they may or may not get back.
They may or may not. The, the merit part is what their evaluation determines. So it, it could be up to five percent. Um, in addition, uh. We were going to adjust the scale, the pay scale for the fire department, which they had, y'all had previously discussed with Chief Reeves. To bring that up to be, uh, very comparable to the law enforcement scale. And then we were going to adjust the county pay classification scale. To begin with what is currently grade six, just due to, uh, the minimum wage requirements that went into effect January first. That minimum of, um, twelve dollars an hour did not even equate to what our bottom of the scale was anymore. Uh, we didn't meet minimum wage standards. So we would increase that to the twenty five, five eighty one, which would be the new bottom of the scale to meet minimum wage standards. And that also allows for our full-time employees at that end of the scale to receive a more competitive wage.
What does that even come to an hour?
It's just roughly over twelve dollars an hour, like twelve dollars and a few pennies an hour.
They're still under a lot of foot.
It, it's still, um, it just barely at that minimum wage mark, but by using that as our minimum, then that allows us to go up.
I'm thinking a Chick-fil-A.
You know, it, I mean, we do have benefits and we have the RS, so that's to be taken into consideration, but. Um, at the same time, a lot of folks have even commented to me that they could go. Get Medicaid and cover those, those healthcare expenses and go make fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour or something.
We're estimating a fifteen percent increase in healthcare or is that, you say that?
Zero. We, we, we received our rates and we stayed level. So our healthcare costs did not increase.
We were looking at a fifteen percent though, right? Well, good.
We had budgeted for that just because it's been three years since we had an increase and we were very fortunate. We have a very. Good pool and a very healthy workforce.
That has a big factor. Well, that same subject though is one of the, with, with the regional library, they're all using everybody's. Resources, why don't they use our resources for insurance and get a cheaper rate with King William instead of staying with Hanover and getting that increase?
We are part of the local choice health plan, which includes us with other localities of our size. Because we can't get a competitive rate by ourselves. So them being associated with Hanover allows them to, to jump onto Hanover's rate.
Right.
And even, um, our representative with the local choice said some of his clients. Had up to a nine percent increase this year. So he was very pleased to tell us that we had zero.
Yeah, even if Hanover does get a nine percent increase, that doesn't mean that their rate is worse than that.
Yeah.
Overall, that's true. Yeah, cause he hadn't got great, right?
No, I mean, they were just.
They were budgeting.
Any questions on any of these pieces?
And you're still up.
I am still up. So if there are no questions on that, I will move on to the next one. Uh, the county administrator will also be recommending one new position this year. Um. It will be for the assessor to be full-time, uh, and establish that office so that we can keep up with those needs. Uh, the county administrator will also be recommending reclassifying five positions from manager to director.
Do we have a budgeted amount yet or?
Um, I think, I, I didn't have the. Total that I put in here. I don't want to get the wrong thing. I don't want to be held. I can certainly, I can certainly send you that amount, but this just corresponds with the additional duties that these people have taken on and these positions have established.
Reading is, is, I'm talking to the board now and did a real good with the assignment of the, the assessment.
I am, because I think we need somebody in-house now instead of keep doing this outside.
In the commissioner's office or under, under, uh, person. That, that was my question.
So what, what is recommended? Commissioner's office or?
They got a commissioner on here. It says commissioner revenue.
We'll do whatever the board says, obviously, but if it was left up to administration, we would go ahead and put it in the, the commissioner.
The commissioner's.
That person is going to have to work with very closely to the commissioner. It doesn't make any sense to really have it separated. We can certainly look at it, uh, well, look, we will look at it after a year and see how it's working out. See how she feels about it, but I think, uh. For purposes of board funding in other areas. We have an opportunity, uh. To establish an office in that, in, in her office, rather than create a brand new one outside of her office.
The, uh, economic director that's being looked at does not fall in this discussion at, at this point?
Well, it's, it would be in this year's budget. Current year, and then it would carry over into next year. Uh, and that is being paid out of the, uh, appropriations that the, uh, board made to the EDA, uh, from the economic development, for economic development.
And we have authorized that, correct?
You have. That's why it's not listed as a new position because it, we hope to have someone on board. Uh, by May first, I hope.
I think it got a few applications.
We do.
We have four.
All right. Anybody else?
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Here's Brad.
Well, included in your packet is the fiscal year twenty twenty four. Five-year plan request for capital improvement. So the general requests include the following: sports complex, design and construct of new library. Administration boardroom audio video monitors. Courthouse parking lot repairs. Digital storage of records for administration in the building department. Facilities department storage office building. Building department software for portal. The EOC at station one. Masonary repair at the admin building. Design of new building for DSS and VDH. Station one driveway crush concrete or milling and station one voting site ADA parking compliant. Parks and rec requests include park upgrades to road and water lines. A portable stair, I mean, a portable stage at the park. Sheriff's office requests include digital storage of records. Vehicle replacement. Dispatch consoles and CAD and EMD upgrade. And the next is fire and EMS requests include turnout here. West Point volunteer fire and rescue, Mango Hick volunteer fire and rescue, rush truck and life pack and Lucas devices. Information technology. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't even, I'm, I skipped on my notes, regional animal shelter, but. That, those costs will actually be split. Well, we anticipate splitting those costs with hanging clean. So that would be the sick room addition, the sick room housing equipment and smoke detectors and fire alarm system. Information technology, server software, computer equipment replacement and maintaining. And cybersecurity initiative. Under preserve and improve CIP assets. HVAC replacement, carpet replacement and admin and roofing projects. The requests have been identified by proposed funding sources listed in slide four or page four of the document. Based on financial policies that have been established, the county continues to maintain an unassigned fund balance in the amount of at least twenty percent. Of the general fund expenditures at the end of each fiscal year. And that, that is the next slide. I'm sorry. That will actually list out what our fund balance is and what the, what we forecast. Uh, the FY twenty two is an estimate from our auditors. Uh, he has not finished the draft. Um, hopefully this week we will have that draft. And then we forecasted what our FY twenty three balance will be. Keep in mind that in FY twenty three, we did use one point. Uh, I think one point three of, um, unsigned funds for capital projects in FY twenty three. And then there is a separate, um, slide for debt services. For our long-term liability. And it lists out a summary for both the county and for the school. You'll see our beginning balances that have as of FY twenty four for each one of those liabilities. And then you'll also see the column that will list what our payments will be in FY twenty four for those debt, for that debt. We actually have started working for financing the water tower project. We anticipate that to be eleven point seven million that we will need to finance for that. And we are working with, um. Um, Davenport on establishing that and moving forward with that. Uh, we're estimating possibly a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Um, annual payment for that debt, which would come from the utilities fund, not from the general fund. And if you'll notice, can we swing back over to the capital presentation script? I'm sorry. And then if we go to the funding source tab, page four, the slide four. So some of the projects that we, um, have listed there are actually will be pending on debt service also. We would be financing them with the help of Davenport. Um, and come back up one. I think it's at the bottom with the business. There you go. So we would be working with Davenport to find a ten point five million for the sports complex. Design and construct the library and upgrade to the road and water lines at the root park. We will, we anticipate using three hundred ninety one thousand, five hundred forty one from the unassigned. Or, uh, as a funding source also, but that's all, right now, that is all we are anticipating using from the unassigned fund. And we have not, uh, budgeted, we have not, um, put in the budget any recommendations to use the general fund to fund capital. So, and when I say that, I mean that any of our revenues coming in, in FY twenty four would not be put towards capital. So and when I say that, I mean that any of our revenues coming in in F Y twenty-four would not be put towards capital.
Where did we come up with the four million for a library? That amount.
Mr. Hutchins. Mr. Hutchins.
Ms. Chairman, that's uh. We've looked at other libraries that have been built around the region, uh particularly in the monkey uh. And even though those are larger, uh we are trying to figure out for scale. And that's a rough number. That's the reason why the R F P uh for the architect is so important, so we can start defining those costs, but. We felt like that was a that was a reasonable number for what size I think we might be looking at.
And the requests tonight are really just that especially for the large projects. It would just be the board giving us the okay to then move forward to 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 obtain financing through Davenport. And then it then it would then be a process so that we would definitely keep the board in. We would have to gather that information for the actual costs and things like that for those those items. And it's possible that we may not be able to do those. Those projects with that, what we have anticipated, but we would definitely talk to the board about that. And keep everyone in the loop on that. Really just giving us the okay to try to move forward with those things.
Ms. Chairman, if I might just add, Ms. Brown's done a great job of uh of identifying I. The board has put itself in a very good position to have options on how we pay for things going forward. Uh, you obviously have a borrowing option that's always out there for you, but you have a very healthy fund balance. That would allow you to pay as you go. A little uh that's in certain projects if you chose to do that and still keep your twenty percent um within reason. You have an ARPA fund that is still not fully expended, that we have some access, that we have some access uh to.
I thought we were discussing spending most of them.
Um, for next year twenty-four, we will be using two hundred twenty-five of that for some capital needs too.
You have a proper, a proper fund that we've used a little bit in the uh last year or so, but not not a tremendous amount. To where it's still healthy and you continue to have proppers that are being added to that fund as you go. So. We're not a, we're not a locality that's relied on just one source to to fund capital. And that's that's a compliment to all of you for for that vision.
And the four million for the park, is that for the baseball fields?
Yes, uh. That's uh, that's not the new, that's not the new part.
No, this would be the four million for the park, actually the roads and the water lines.
Yeah, don't, well, don't for, don't forget, we got a million dollar propper for that. And then the other improvements are again an estimate at possibly three million dollars.
And that's based on the Hill Group?
And we never did find out, I mean, this is totally off a budget, but when they would start that using that one million?
We've been uh having discussions with them just last week.
Okay.
Um, even though they have a a provision that said fifty percent. That's not, that's not to have to hold true. Uh, they're willing to step in and uh and as they do some preliminary site work right around the peripheral. Of uh of their project, they can come right over and uh and help us as well.
To help out the parking and the.
Yes.
The roads and everything.
And as you know, we have to do it in between season.
Right.
Because of uh just the nature of the use of the park. So we we feel comfortable, we might be able to get something started as early as uh late summer. Um, and not interfere with uh with the fall, with the fall season they have.
Well. I think that. You and I are aware of a possible another option. Uh, maybe we can discuss that.
Next week, yes.
That's all.
It sounds good.
Okay, well, thank you.
Ms. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, one of the. Most unfortunate subjects to talk about is litter. Uh, we know that the county, uh, it seemed like it was almost overnight, it was just hit with a an abundance of uh. Of litter, uh. Most people see it along Route thirty and Route three sixty, but I know if you go to some of the other side roads and. And even leading into West Point, uh, it's tremendous what what is out there. We uh, we recognize the fact that V dot is responsible for. Maintenance of roads and that includes litter pickup. Uh, but we also know that the past history has told us that they do not have the manpower. Uh, to be able to carry through to the level that we would have expectations, especially with the way litter is is right now. So I'd like to discuss with the board this evening of of doing the same model that we did last year when we took care of the median. In Route three sixty with grass cutting and of course keeping the uh. Uh, the litter out of that median. Uh, in which we would contract help uh here in the uh next few weeks to catch up. On what is uh really unsightly in many in many locations. Uh, and then once we have done that, that we can retain this uh, uh, this contract for. Over the summer, if if we didn't get the same level of support that we would really need from either V dot. Or from our our citizens. So there's a number of adopt the highway programs that are on the books. But for one reason or the other, uh, they haven't been keeping up with the pace that we would like. Uh, so. The cost we're estimating for this uh in the short term would be about ninety-five hundred dollars. Uh, we have a litter grant that would cover a majority of that. And then we can use the county administrator's contingency for the remainder of that. Uh, we would identify the uh the spots with your input where we would need uh this group to work. And they've already done some contracting uh through V dot. Um, and not here necessarily, but in other places. And uh their their experience with the with safety and uh at disposal and and all those things.
At ninety-five hundred, what kind of distance would that be covering? Do you have any idea?
We we can take them wherever.
But I I'm saying about what we have to cover, I mean, you're looking at how many miles, forty-some miles all the way up there.
Well, I think the better question would be how many hours would be uh would be involved in in where we're going. Yeah, but our our thought is to hit the the two main arteries very, very hard, thirty and and three six.
It's not good. I'm not seeing a change in the public. I mean, they're throwing stuff out all of them. And this is going to be a continuing.
You know, when when you're driving fifty-five miles an hour, you don't usually see a small percentage of it. If you get out there and jog like me, as slow as I go, I see every piece of it. It's incredible. It's incredible, it's incredible what people throw out, I mean.
But stay give everything you wanted, because you've been working with the contract a little bit. Um, just that what they provided us with the price, um. That was eight thousand dollars would cover not just thirty, three sixty, Quentin Church Road, River Road. And a number of other Dammies Mill, a number of others. Yes.
I wouldn't have thought that would have covered.
That was their estimate. Now, this is the contractor that works. That V dot hires that they use before they do a grass cutting.
Right.
So uh, I don't know how thorough that is, and it's certainly within the V dot. Right away, they're not going to be walking across somebody's field picking stuff up. Uh, but it would, I think, go a long ways to help him because it starts right there at the road and then he's.
It's not going to be cigarette butts, it's going to be Bud Light cans.
Yes, tires.
It's amazing. When you're jogging today, you'll see one, say Bud Light can. Human beings are creatures of a of habit. The next day, almost within two feet of each other, you'll see. Of the same, it's the same, same group of people that are doing it. But uh Sheriff Walton, you made a presentation uh last year about uh road crews. Uh, doing some of that, didn't you?
Well, we we did discuss that. If there were Charles three years ago, this way, you may not recall, uh, the jail did away with uh.
Uh, the uh Little Flinners, the regional skiers did away with the road crews, lessened up to the localities. Uh, Mr. Heiser, I tried to push it back this past year in the budget time to get that back on uh to the jails. Books, but it just, it just didn't work out. It's too expensive for them to put the manpower back out there. And honestly, it's too expensive for for me uh to provide someone to go to jail, pick up. Inmates, bring them here and watch them all day long, let it pick up pressure. I just don't have the extra manpower to do that. But yes.
I just remembered you made a presentation.
Right, because it was, it was gonna be all the participating. And we, at the time we were doing it, not all of them were quite in agreement.
Not all the localities wanted to to spend the extra money that it would cost to put that program back in place.
And they would rotate ever so, I forget, how many, how many.
Five, five jurisdictions, probably every fifth week, we would get the work crew here to work. Uh, but again, that just, it just didn't pass the jail board twice. Okay, I'm sorry.
But that exists.
It does not exist, no. And I'm getting the same complaints, I'm sure Mustache Craps is getting from citizens about about the litter. We're doing the best we can to step up enforcement on that. Not many people throw trash out in front of a police car. So, you know, it makes it difficult for us to enforce something we don't see, uh, and I see it on the side of the road just like you do, so.
Sure, if if a citizen had a dash cam and they were to catch a truck or a vehicle tossing. Can they, can that be brought to you?
It it can be, but here here's the problem with that. So they see that and it gets, then we had to prove who the driver of the vehicle was. If we could get a picture of the driver, that's one thing. Now, our county code allows us, if if we find trash on the side of the road. And it's got someone's name in that trash. Our county code is written so that we can charge that person after we give them a written notice. Um, to clean it up and they don't, we can charge them with that. I talked to our our judge the other day to find out just a little bit about what the punishment would be there, because the code allows. Uh, in lieu of a fine, to give them so many hours of community service to go out and pick up trash. Uh, but we just don't get enough of that to make that happen.
And with that, Sheriff, I I would believe uh worry a little bit about the liability to them. If someone under charges and on on thirty, walking along, you know what I mean, it's.
Well, true, but we we also have um citizen volunteer groups that go out and pick up trash along on the highway too. And local probation officer uh coordinates with uh those who put up probation with so many hours of of community service they have to do. To go out and pick up trash. And we have given her a list of of road names to target. Unfortunately, that number is down. She doesn't have a lot of people right now that are on the uh. The uh. Community service work to be done. So it'll it'll pick back up, you know, this is kind of up and down, but right now she just doesn't have a lot of people.
I have gotten groups together and I'm gonna tell you, it it's just hard and we can come back a week later and there's same trash or more trash is out in the same lake. It's, I I don't know what we do about it, long-term.
You find more trash along Route thirty near the near the landfill. I don't know if you pay attention to that, but the closer you get to the landfills, like, you know, bags fall off the trucks. Or trailers and and then that's where they, then they get run over and that one bag turns into five hundred pieces of trash along the highway. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, I think, I think this is, this initiative is a good start. Uh, I'm just wondering. Education and prevention, is there anything perhaps in schools to incorporate a. An awareness program at the at the child level, all the way from. Them preaching to their parents about.
Sure.
I don't know, people that throw beer cans out and other trash probably aren't going to listen to their kids.
They could care less.
But we gotta start somewhere. You gonna look into that.
Yes, and we'll report back and keep you posted on. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item we have up is board supervisors' request, Mr. Reg. Same thing we had last time, but try to get maybe the more of that internet. Look at the, well, we do have somebody looking at the library plans, that's good. Trying to get more business, I guess.
Did we have the breezeline announcement since last meeting?
Yeah.
Today?
Last week.
Tuesday.
Uh, I've spoken enough in my last meeting.
Brilliant, it was nice. Mr. Gardner.
This isn't really a request, I guess it is to a certain degree. Tammy and I had a friend that was killed in Woketon by a logging truck. Uh, you're probably aware of it, you know, she was a daily walker. She always wore blaze orange. She, every morning, she walked from from Woketon to the bridge and took. Uh, beautiful pictures of the sunrise over the matter of nine. And uh, it's it's really a sad thing. As I was in Tappahannock tonight and I came the back way and her car was sitting there with uh flowers on it. So uh, if everybody could pray for her family. Uh, that's all.
I'm very encouraged by the uh the lower tax rate, it's phenomenal. Um, as more and more citizens get get that. Figure, I think they'll be very pleased. And yet we're still going to meet all of the requirements, correct? That's the big thing.
Um, get able to pay the bills.
We're not, we're not doing anything extravagant. We'd love to, but not this year. Still doing good things, though. That's all I have.
And with that, I I think I'll go back a few days and we've been doing. The best we could. Over the years, and I mean Travis and them, they know, they came from times when they were borrowing money to. To pay the payroll. So, I mean, we're looking in good shape. Uh, we just got to keep it that way. And and not overspend. And working on that litter, I mean, that is, like I said, sometimes I get distraught about it because if you go out and do all that work and then. A few days later, it's back. That's all I I have. Anybody want to make a motion going close? I'm joking, oh, I'm joking. Do I have a motion?
Second. Motion, second.
I think we had a.
Hi.
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 Hi.